September tenth, year of our Lord, 2024, 3:00 PM. Item two invocation will be given by Councilmember Ramata even those with even anyone wishing to join us for a moment of prayer can do so. Voluntary by standing up. Councilman?
Yep.
You have the floor.
Please join me in prayer. Father God, we thank you for this day you've given us, Lord Jesus. Well, we're very grateful and thankful for the recent reign that we have had, Lord. It's been such a refreshing and just brings some new life to our to our city, Lord Jesus. And Lord, we just pray that Lord you may just be with us today as we go through these work sessions and our council meeting, Lord. I just pray that Lord you may just give us the wisdom and the knowledge that we need to make decisions that are going to benefit and be great for our city. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. May be seated. We're going to go into item three. Once again, I will ask, everybody in the back row can hear me? All right. Item three, discuss a warning, police department parking garage demolition removal to Valet National. This will be chief? Is it Vet or?
Veet.
Veet?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. We, you know, a few months back, we brought to you the the issues that we were having with our parking garage. And we were awarded some some funds to deal with that. And thankfully, the the bid process is is over now. And at the committee that was put together, which included myself, representatives from from legal and planning and purchasing. We picked Veet as the the vendor to come in and and remove that old parking structure. Tons of problems with that. The great thing is the budget was 279,890 and the actual cost will be 194,721, which is $85,000 below budget, which is a great thing. It's an awesome thing. So this is just simply our request for for that.
Chief, would the 85,169 go back to the general fund?
Well, here's the thing, these are all. These are ARPA funds, right? These are ARPA funds.
Okay.
So they're not going to go back to the general fund because they're ARPA funds.
So we can take and apply them to something else that then can.
Yeah. Because the other two projects you guys approved for us, they may be a little bit over. So not that much over, but it there could be five or six thousand. I think I think there'll probably still be about 60 left.
We haven't got change orders yet on this, so.
Well, there's, but this is just a destruction.
It's just a demolition.
Yeah, this is not building, this is just tearing it down.
There's still going to be change orders that's coming.
Chief, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Have we addressed and worked with a hospital on the two properties east of the of the head of the training center to be able to park your vehicles there? I I know we have a I know we have a MOU with the south portion. Right there where Tech Todd has some of their road construction equipment, but the one north that's south of the old examiner.
So with parking, I mean, so you understand that this is probably going to take five or six days at the most to 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 take down and remove. So in in great, maybe a week. So we're looking at Municipal Plaza, we're looking at the, what is it, the southwest corner of at Second and Grant?
Yeah.
So there's there's parking, there's going to be parking for us for for that week. And then we can come in and park on on the the grounds where where it exists now.
The tearing down is the easy part, you know, rebuilding it back and how we're going to secure those vehicles.
Yes, sir.
Secure area is going to be another issue.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, it'll be an ongoing situation as we start developing this.
Yeah.
And so.
It's just, and I know it may seem like some to some that we're putting the the cart before the horse by tearing it down before we have a plan to rebuild it. But when you look at the 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 nature of the structure, it needs to come down. It's it needs to come down.
Yeah, it's unsafe structure. So we need to mitigate our liability by going ahead and doing this now.
And that may be where some of the savings that you have can go back into fencing and all to secure the vehicles.
Absolutely.
Yep. Okay, council, do you have any questions?
No, very good.
Do we have a consensus to move forward?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Chief, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item four, discuss proposed benefit plan designs, costs for plan options and council's feedback discussions facilitating with Gallagher Benefit Services Incorporated. Ms. Griffin?
Hi, good afternoon, Council, Mayor, City Manager Dan and Norma. We're coming before you in the session because we wanted to give you an opportunity to see what we've been working on. Allow you time to digest it before we come back in a couple of weeks. So Gallagher, Kevin Towery is here today. He's the senior VP for the Benefit Services with Gallagher, who we contracted with. And we're going to talk you through what we've worked on, okay?
Okay, great. Yep, okay, thank you. Everybody hear me okay? Again, my name my name's Kevin Towery, I'm with Gallagher Benefit Services. My benefits consultant's been doing this for almost 10 years, 40 years, I hate to say that, but a long time. And so I actually have history with the city. I worked with Dara Wells 20 some years ago on this health plan. And so I've got a lot of knowledge about it. So it's kind of everything that we've been working through, evaluating it, looking at all the moving parts, brings back a lot of memories. I will tell you, this is quite a heavy lift. What I mean by that is moving out of this is is no small challenge, but we think we've got a path forward. The whole premise behind us going to market is to not only improve the inner workings of the plan, but also improve the employee experience. I think that's the number one thing, being able to compete, attract, retain, you know, employees, compete with your local energy companies, et cetera. So as I go through this presentation, please ask questions. I, you know, we've got, you know, a path forward where we're making some recommendations, but please stop, ask questions. And with that, if nobody has any questions, I'm going to move forward to the RFP marketing review. I think everybody's got a copy of that. So we've got four evaluation criteria here. I'm going to kind of just breeze through this, but I will tell you the first evaluation factor, A there, probably the number one thing that we looked at and we we used our actuaries to do this is to make sure that us moving from, the program you're in now is called a reference-based pricing program. Okay? It's an old school reference-based pricing program. It's it's got some good things to it, but some bad. Having said that, there's direct pricing there. We're talking about moving off of that and looking at what we call a network carrier, Blue Cross, Cigna, United, people you've probably heard of before. To do that, we had to do some very deep evaluations. So that the evaluation criteria really on the medical side, it's not so much about rates, it's really about those network discounts. So I'll get into that in a minute. Technical solutions. We want somebody with good technology, robust, that had a good integrated product. So you'll see some of the the recommendations there. Our idea is also make this simpler on Yvette and her staff from an administrative perspective, because everything is kind of, for lack of a better term, by hand today. Evaluation factor C, quality response, you know, some folks didn't respond, which is disappointing. You know, you've got a couple of companies that didn't respond that you're doing business with today, don't really know why, they just didn't get get the stuff in. And then financial stability, that's a critical part. You'll see we've evaluated some, you know, in a better light than others. So any questions on how we evaluate things? All right, next page, the bidders, we've got a lot of bidders. You know, we started really looking at the medical, I'll tell you that, and that's where the discounts come in. So, you know, we we had some companies that declined to quote. Part of the reason why they declined to quote is because they didn't either have a network in West Texas or it wasn't a strong network. Either from a medical perspective or dental or or what have you, prescription also. So we have got a number of medical, vision, telemedicine, shockingly, we had a lot of telemedicine, you know, bids, life and disability, flexible spending and COBRA administration, I'll get into that because today you're utilizing your prior consultant's business. So we 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 worried about that relationship and getting good service, so we're recommending moving away from that. Mental health is has, we did a focus group and we've got a lot of field feedback on mental health. So we've got a good solution for that that we'll address in a couple of minutes. We have preliminary prescription benefit results. We don't have the final, we should have those, you know, anytime, but our pharmacy group marketed your pharmacy expense to come up with better bids, better rebates, what have you. Questions on the carriers? And if I'm going too fast, please stop me, I'm just, there's quite a bit to cover here. Okay, first thing we started with is medical ASO, we call it administrative services. Basically, the the city's self-funded, pays their own claims. We're going to recommend that you stay self-funded, but have somebody else adjudicate the claims. That recommendation today is Blue Cross Blue Shield. And the number one reason is because of the network. It is so critical to have a good network, strong network where you're located, especially in West Texas. But they dominate the state from a number of members in the state, so they've got more negotiating power, stronger with the hospitals. Cigna provided a good bid, but Cigna has a lot of little levers inside their system that for, you know, we call it shared savings. So they're not as competitive and their network is not as competitive. So we only got two bids, which was, you know, honestly, Blue Cross, such a dominant player, is not, it's a good spot for you all. Any questions? All right, prescription benefit manager. We went to a lot of, we call them PBMs. These are basically companies that all they do is administer your prescription drug program, specialty drugs, retail drugs, mail order drugs, generic drugs. You go to the pharmacy, present your card, they're the ones behind the scene adjudicating the claims, paying the pharmacy and then making sure that the city pays, you know, gets rebates off those. So right now, our recommendation is to keep it an integrated PBM with Blue Cross. We've got some final numbers coming in because there is a good bid from CVS, but it's an offshoot of CVS program. So we still have to look at that and make a final recommendation. But again, we're coming at this trying to, you know, today's system the city's using is so fragmented, so many different vendors. We're trying to make this seamless, easy, employees present a card, everything works, you know, and not that it doesn't work today, but it's it's a little bit choppy. So no questions, I'm going to keep moving on. You're self-funded on dental, you pay your own claims on dental. So again, we're recommending, we had a couple of good bids here, but we're recommending that you keep this in another integrated model with Blue Cross. It's simpler, I think, for all employees, simpler for HR versus chopping this up into the standard or Cigna. Standard and Cigna, great companies, they're just probably not as integrated as we'd like. Questions? Benefit design. We're proposing just a couple of changes to the benefit design with the dental. Today, you have a no life, you have a lifetime deductible, that's that's really old school, that goes back to the 80s, to be honest with you. So we're proposing that it be a calendar year deductible, which the deductible would only apply to a basic and major service, excuse me, major services only, $50 deductible, individual, 150 family. Today, you're you're reimbursing 80% for major services, that's really above market. We reckon, we initially talked about moving that down to 50%, but I think we settled on 60%. This, you know, we don't have a lot of folks using those services, we we ran some analytics, but I think 60% will be a good trade-off there. Questions? You've got a good annual maximum for dental and for orthodontia, by the way, that's very relevant, new benchmark. Voluntary vision?
Can you explain, just for the council's adification, explain the 90th percentile on the dental form, would you, please?
Did I go the wrong way here? Yeah, it's fine. That's what I was, oh, I see, my bad.
Because that can be confusing.
So 90th percent, today, you're paying billed charges. So whatever gets billed, you're paying it off that. We're recommending go to what's called a 90th percentile, which basically means in this area, what nine out of 10 dentists charge for a tooth teeth cleaning example. So if if nine out of 10 charge $100 for a teeth cleaning and your dentist charges 125, you're going to be out of pocket $25. So that's the way that program works, but it is, you shouldn't see much cutback. I will tell you, there's not a ton of dentists in the West Texas area that are in network, but they're starting to get more and more that are in network. Questions? Voluntary vision. You've been with MetLife, MetLife utilizes the VSP network. VSP is the 900-pound gorilla, they really fit well throughout, you know, the United States, but they do even better in more rural populated areas. Not the middle of Odessa's rural, but, you know, they seem to have more providers in the area. Unfortunately, MetLife, I'm not quite sure why, but they did not respond. And even though we've got a ton of business with them, they just didn't get their response in on time. And so we can't accept, you know, what, how, you know, their renewal, so we're recommending you just do a direct contract with VSP. Little bit more, you know, pricier than the other ones, but these other providers are not as strong financially, and so we're a little bit concerned there. Blue Cross does not do a real good job with integrating VSP. So there's no reason not to just do business direct with VSP, it'll be simple, easy, it's a voluntary program, employees pay all the cost. You can see that the pricing is just a little bit different.
But it is a four-year rate, isn't it?
Yeah. It is, yes.
Which is huge.
Yeah.
I've got to say, four years. It's easy to budget.
Yeah. So this is a real big topic, I think I mentioned this at the beginning, on the focus groups especially. As we all know, especially since COVID hit, mental health is such a huge, you know, issue, you know, and more and more companies, employers are looking at really trying to figure out a good, robust mental health program. You know, I talked to Chief Cotton, Chief of Police, at length about, you know, their concerns and what they needed. So we're recommending, it's a little bit more expensive, but a company that provides a mental health network, that's a direct network where they actually own the network. So the access to mental health services will not be like, you know, hey, there's a psychiatrist locally, I can't get in to see him or her. You know, that's a common complaint, even, you know, where I live in Dallas. And so this company has their own network that also provide employee assistance, really are high on them, they have a lot of big companies. I'm talking like Shell, Exxon, people like that. So they do a really good job, but it's, we're putting it in the budget for today. We think it's the better way to go than just putting in an EAP like with Standard, which is, you know, what everybody has today for six visits, and that's not mental health. They refer you out to somebody, but it's normally, they look at your Blue Cross or your network and say, well, you've got a provider over here in Odessa, go see them. But we heard from time to time from employees that the access is difficult, and we want to try to provide better access.
On the face-to-face sessions, this company offers six per year?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's just EAP. They've got, I think they've got built in 10 mental health visits per year. There's different ways to slide, see, they provide mental health and EAP, or we can go with Standard, it's just EAP. You can see the price difference, quite drastic. I will tell you that have many accounts that have employee assistance with six face-to-face, and that's all they've got. Nobody calls in, nobody utilizes it, you know, they're looking for mental health services. Now, mind you, we we have, will have mental health, and you have mental health covered today under the city's plan, so that's still going to be covered. But this company allows you to get greater access to the providers, and I think that's the big thing.
And anything above that, if I'm right, from the discussion yesterday rolls in is just rolls into the insurance.
Correct.
Normal coverage.
Correct.
So you're not limited.
Yeah.
You get this or or nothing. It does, you you do still have mental health.
The access is really important because the way it stands right now might take, you bet I don't know what you're seeing, but from what I hear, it might take you six, eight weeks to get in to see somebody, and usually somebody needs something, they don't need it in six or eight weeks, probably need it today.
Yep.
And that goes for all of our employees.
Especially employees and for our.
Yeah, especially employees and for our.
Telemedicine. It's kind of surprising to me, we got a lot of bids for standalone telemedicine. This is a product that we really need to have integrated. It needs to be very seamless. And what I mean by that is it needs to be inside your health plan. And we talked to the hospital about their program. We don't, we want to try to keep employees in this cocoon so that they have easy access, so they can access it, you know, it'll be on their ID card, it'll be simple to to call in and get a telemedicine visit. Mind you, this telemedicine is more for sniffles, it's not full primary care, we're not trying to incentivize folks to to do that. But it's, you know, it's not utilized as much as we would like, but from what we heard from employees, I think it there might be utilized in the city. Questions? It's very cheap, but everybody has it and, you know, especially, obviously during COVID, it got a lot of a lot of utilization. Basic life and ADND. You've had the standards since since I worked with the city 20 years ago, and they do a really good job with, you know, the government entities. They're still the best price, and so we're recommending that you stay the course with them for another two years. We do need to try to figure out what we're going to do with the retirees. And what we mean by that is today, the standard contract assumes that the city is paying for all retirees' life insurance. So today, that's set up on a one-time salary to 60,000. So if I was a retiree, I made 60,000, the city, based on the way the contract is written today, says that you're supposed to be covering me for that $60,000 for life insurance. It's working on a contributory basis where the employee, the retiree is paying for the life insurance, and we've only got 90 of them paying. So we we're going to need to make a decision about, do we, you know, flip this back to the non-contributory, the way it was written years ago? Or do we keep it contributory where they're paying their cost? Or do we reduce the amount to, you know, 10,000? I know there's some questions about, you know, the Texas retirement system and what, if they've got something there. So we just need to kind of take a path here. We don't, we're not recommending, you know, to us, it doesn't matter, but it's a it's a strong benefit if you do non-contributory, you know, you pay the full cost, that's 221 retirees.
That was going to be my question.
Yeah, so there's 221 retirees, there's only 90 contributing today, so those other 130 are not covered today. Technically. Like if we had a death claim, we, you know, you know, if the employee had the booklet, you know, we might have an issue.
Yeah.
And we don't want to have an issue.
We're out of compliance with the contract, what you're saying.
Yes. We have to administer contracts the way they're written. Go ahead.
And we would recommend, because the retiree coverage is a part of the active pool, which drives up our costs, and in the long run, we're going to begin to see the effects of that, right? And so what we talked with Kevin about is possibly limiting the amount to 10,000.
Life insurance?
Mm-hmm.
So that we, our rates don't continue to increase because we have the retirees in our active pool. I did take a look, and I'll I'll, I need to do a little bit more research, I did take a look at the teasers, teasers, that's where I'm from, the Texas State Retirement System, to see if they offered a death benefit in that plan as a part of the retirement, and they do, but I want to make sure I read through all of that information. So that's what we would be proposing. Now, whether the decision that you all will need to make, though, is whether or not we want to pay for it.
If I just out of curiosity, based on that last comment, did or did you do some research on how other municipalities are doing their their health insur, I mean, this part of the?
Health insurance for retirees?
We did not, I can't speak to that right this second. You know, I do know that a lot of them have cut back, you know, or they have some a reduced schedule versus this this one times flat amount is to 60,000. But it's it's a limited amount, you know, I know it's not 60. I just can't quote you off the top of my head exactly how many.
But I can do that research and get that information back to you.
Councilman Boskis, would you be willing to share what School District does, I know you know about that.
You mean the teacher retirement system?
No, the retiree retirement benefits, yeah.
Of course, that that comes through the teacher retirement system.
Right.
Which is what I'm retired from. It's very nice benefit for us as far as, I'm not, I'm no longer a contributing employee, I'm a retiree, but I'm getting some excellent benefits. But of course, we're multi-thousand strong when it comes to that, you know, we're not just 221.
Yeah. Yep.
As far as dollars, I'm not going to divulge it, it's just nice, very little out of pocket for me.
But do you have any life, they offer you life insurance?
Yeah, they, 10,000, by the way.
Okay.
10,000 and the like. I I thought you were talking about the overall.
No, it's all more like life insurance.
No, it's 10,000.
And thinking about the overall, Kevin talked about earlier that we have to make some decisions on retirees with regard to the health insurance as well. So of course, just as we get older, we use more, we use the services, right? And so that's where our biggest cost lives. And we probably want to consider, because anyone now can just come to work for the city of Odessa. Maybe they worked at Midland for, you know, 20 years, and then they come to work for the city of Odessa and retire in five. They're eligible for lifetime health insurance with us, and although they pay for it, we're thinking that we need to put some threshold as to how long you need to work with the city in order to be eligible for that health insurance.
It doesn't exist right now in the contract, it was never put in?
No, somebody could come to work for you for a year, you know, retire, get full retiree coverage.
They meet the teachers' retirement.
Yeah.
I mean, I keep saying teachers, that's not going to work. If they meet the Texas.
Yeah.
One of the challenges with the retirees also is making it consistent because it's not 100% consistent. So we we have to really look, like the question was valid, what are other people doing? What can we afford to do? What should we be doing and how do we make it equitable moving forward for all retirees? And it's been it's been a challenge, it really has been.
And it is common to have a time limit, a certain amount of years that you have to work for an organization to be eligible for those benefits, so that's not uncommon.
So let me just dumb it down for myself, and maybe it'll help you guys a little bit on this side of the deal. So if somebody comes to work for the city, they worked in Midland for two years, they get real sick, they're on the medical plan, they have cancer, they run up a $500,000 bill. We pay it, and that claim, first 400, is on us, and that goes back and affects our experience and what we have to charge everybody else to pay their claims. That make sense? That's the problem with it. And so it's not, it's not what you collect in premium, because we pay less in premium, because our premiums are all based on how our money pool does, what we what we pull in, what we spend. So better experience we have, the lower, less we can charge our regular employees. So retirees are going to cost you more, at least in my career, that's what I saw.
Always.
You know, because they, the only two reasons you retire is, you know, one, you should finish 40 years of business, in business or whatever, or you're sick. And so we got to protect ourselves, so.
And these decisions we're talking about is on a go-forward basis.
Yeah.
Because we know that we can't take away probably some place now, but we want to think about how to, as you described, Council Tompkins, how do you, how do we protect ourselves on a go-forward?
Any other questions on this?
All right, so moving on, just kind of skip through a couple of stuff because it's pretty standard. Voluntary life, you offer it, you have the standard today, it standard looks to be, you know, the right choice, stay the course with them. We are going to what we call a unit tobacco rate versus a non-tobacco tobacco. We are going to what we call a unit tobacco rate versus a non-tobacco tobacco. That's hard to administer. And frankly, it's an honor system, so most people are checking the non-tobacco box anyway. Moving forward to voluntary short-term disability. You have this today through a, a kind of an outlier carrier, and the pricing is very expensive. We recommend offering it through the standard. You can see here the pricing is very competitive, plus a three-year rate guarantee. I think it's going to be a much more robust plan for employees, they're going to embrace it better. That product you had before was sort of like an individual policy that they bought. This is a group policy with better pricing, so it's going to be a good lift. This is voluntary, though, employees pay the full cost. So I mentioned COBRA and flexible spending, these kind of pages go together here. Part of the reason is you've, you are currently, first off, administering your own COBRA in-house. We, we think as your consultant that that's, that's a liability. We think it needs to be in somebody else's hands that does all the billing, collects the premiums, and sends the money to you. Then that way, you're managing, you know, if somebody is late, you know, they're, they're at day 35, they didn't make their payment, well, you know, we'll extend you a few more days. We're also recommending that they handle retiree billing because we've had some problems with retirees paying on time. So it's just designed to get this more into a, you know, a technical system, you know, that everybody else is utilizing. And I think it'll, it's not so much designed to save money, but it'll be much more efficient. It'll take a lot of billing and just, from what I understand, a lot of moving parts inside the city to get, you know, bills out to get them collected, so. Any questions on that? It's an inexpensive product, it's not expensive to purchase, it's just, this is a big change. So it's going to be, especially for retirees, it's going to be a step. They're going to get a bill from somebody else.
And right now, it's coming from the city?
Yes.
And so the, the risk management's handling that billing internally?
That was your question, I'm sorry.
On the COBRA, you're handling the COBRA internally.
Yes, we're doing, we're doing it internally.
Along with the retiree billing.
Have we ever did, what's that costing us annually to administer that? Have we ever, if we ever did it, I know you haven't been here for a long time, but we've never done a cost analysis, what that's costing us and what this will save us.
If we have, I would be very surprised that we did. The, the, the thing is, is also just as Kevin was speaking to, is consistently in logistics.
And it's more around compliance as well.
It is.
Because the COBRA rules are very, very stringent.
Yeah, I know, as well, I was kind of, you know, shocked to say that, why would we want to administer with the, with the rules being so strict? And getting into violation is so easy.
Exactly, and it makes us really nervous, and because.
How is the liability not assessed on that?
Yes.
Or was assessed and just?
Right, exactly, and our, and Kevin mentioned about the retirees, like we've had, just one example that comes to mind, a retiree that hadn't paid for like almost an entire year. But then I guess they got ready to use the service, to use the benefit. And so because we didn't have this lockdown in writing in our plan document, I mean, it said that you've got to pay all the premiums up to current.
Well, in the, in the private sector, you, you get dropped, you go into COBRA, you don't pay. You go one month without paying, you're done.
That's correct.
You missed the due date by one day.
You get dropped.
We've not done that, and so.
And it's hard and fast.
It's going to, as Mr. Beckmeyer has talked about, we want to be able to do things consistently, fairly, treat everyone the same, and we haven't been able to do that. There's too many compliance rules that we're trying to keep up with.
And that, that's one question I've never asked on all the meetings we've had. Do we have a specific insurance coverage for administering COBRA? I don't think we probably do. And see, so that would just be.
Nobody would ever write that into a liability policy?
Yeah, I wouldn't think so.
Because they would never think to do that.
Yeah, I've never seen it.
And, and I can guarantee your stop-loss carrier does not know that. So we're not telling them that, okay, bye-bye. Especially if that retiree claim was a stop-loss claim.
This is live, public, and recorded.
Oh, apologize. You don't have a stop-loss.
It is what it is, so. We ended up.
I'm not going to spend too much time on flexible spending. This is being administered by somebody else, but it's your current consultant's program. WEX does both, they're going to be able to do COBRA, excuse me, I keep missing the button, wrong button. They'll be able to do COBRA and flexible spending. So that'll be a real simple, integrated system. All right, moving on. The same company that provided the short-term disability product was providing a critical illness, hospital indemnity, and accident. We call those voluntary benefits. So we're recommending to make life easy from an administrative perspective, but also the pricing's good, is to put it all with a standard, it's billing, it's a good product, it's, it's going to be on a group chassis versus individual product. So unless there's any questions on that, those, I'm going to move forward to the.
Well, I just think it's important for the council to know that that APL company is a subsidiary or.
You know, we, we don't have a lot of information on them, I'm sorry. And we don't have information financially about them.
Yeah, it's, it's a question mark.
On the company?
On APL, yeah, we don't even know who, we.
You know, you know who they are?
No, I don't know, I don't think Kevin does either. Never heard of them. It's not like an Aflac, I can assure you.
All right, so now we're going to get into a little bit more details here, mainly around the medical plan and medical contributions. So please stop me because we want to, this, this, apologize for the print being a little small, but what we're recommending is, we, today, we have a bronze, silver, and gold plan, as you all know. This is medical and prescription drug coverage. And we're proposing we go to a gold and a bronze plan. You can see in red there, we're proposing small changes to the deductible and out-of-pocket expense, but we're planning to add copays to the coverage. So we think that's a real good offset for employees. You know, one of the critical things today is, as I said earlier, is keeping employees compliant with their medication, with their health visits versus them going to the ER and just having a claim blow up, right? So we want to keep them compliant, so we think this is the way to do that. I think we've also, if we haven't talked to you in the past, but about the clinic, we've, we've got, I think, good dialogue going with the hospital to where they will run the city's clinic. The plan is that that clinic will have a zero copay, so employees can go and get services at zero copay at the clinic like they used to in the old clinic. So we're real excited about that. But we've also got copays to where they can go see other physicians in the network. The other beauty here that I really didn't say at the beginning is now we've got a nationwide network. So if somebody has a real problem, they can go to New York City. They can go to MD Anderson, they can go to UT Southwestern, they can go all over if they want to go. Because in the past, the city had to do what they call a single-case agreement. Well, that's like being out of gas and going to somebody and saying, you know, I need a gallon of gas and paying $10 for it, right? So it, it's really important that we have this nationwide network so people can have access to care. Did you have a question?
No, I was just going to delve into that, and also that helps our experience again, which should lower our claims, which makes a difference in what everybody has to pay, so that's the whole key to that.
It's the key to that, yeah.
And that's what drives this whole financial model.
Any questions?
I'm going to, just a point that I've made several times, and I'm going to make over and over again until this is done. Right now, if I walk in to a hospital or to a doctor, to a hospital in Houston, and I have these two cards right here, they're going to say, well, you don't have insurance. That's very possible, we've had it over and over again. If I walked in and I had one of these said blue cross on it, I'm getting seen whether I can afford the deductible or not, they're going to work on me and not require me to write a check. We'll work that out in the end. It's, it's, the benefit is that nationwide network, that, that name on that card that I'm walking in now with now. Because they understand the client, that the, the doctors understand that these, these programs that were created at that time were self-insured, were primarily to deny claims. Now we want to pay claims, we want to provide insurance. That was the opposite at that point. And that's why they want you to pay upfront now. We had one of our, one of our team members go in for a procedure, and they wouldn't let him out of the waiting room until he wrote a check for like 10 grand. And we called him and said, yeah, you better, no matter what. But we shouldn't have to make that call. He should be able to walk in, or she should be able to walk in. They have coverage, and it'll be worked out in the end.
Sorry, Kev. Oh, no, that was a good, great comment. So we're proposing a contribution change, but employees pay for medical coverage. On the left side of the screen here, page, if you're looking at that, we have today's employee contributions for the bronze, silver, and gold. Today, you're, you're on what's called a three-tier contribution schedule, employee plus one, excuse me, employee only, employee plus one, employee plus two. We're recommending that we go to what's called a four-tier structure, which is employee, employee plus spouse, employee plus children, employee plus family. Most everybody operates under the four-tier structure today. Very seldom do you see a three-tier or a two-tier. With that, we're recommending small adjustments to the contributions. So if you look at the employee monthly under the bronze $1,250 plan on the left side, and you move across to the bronze $1,300 on the right, you'll see slight adjustments. So we're talking about a spouse paying, employee covering a spouse for $35 a month. We're talking about someone covering children for $25 a month. And we're talking about a family paying $75 a month. So adjustments, but we think we're adding to the benefits with the copays, with the clinic. You know, we're, it is still a very robust plan. At the bottom there, right, you see the adjustments to the gold plan. We don't have as many participants. You know, and what we're trying to mix and match here, we've got 406 folks in the bronze and 344 in the silver. Taking the silver away, I would venture to say, based on what we've calculated, 90% of those will go to the bronze. Well, that's a big, huge bump for them. Meaning like, they've saved a bunch, you know, if I'm in the bronze today and I'm covering my spouse, I'm paying $113 a month, now I go to $35. So it's a win at the end of the day. So, and I will tell you, in all the focus groups, we heard a lot of employees asking, what are my premiums going up, you know, how am I going to afford this? So we're trying to think of that mindset a little bit here and take baby steps. Because this whole process is not do everything in one year. We, we've got a plan here to do this over multiple years to tweak things, it's going to take time, so. I'll stop there, and if anybody's got any comments or questions. I mean, there is a school of thought, you can say, well, I, I do a split between the bronze and silver today, and that's the new bronze. That's, you know, it could be a big bump for some folks, you know, monthly.
Council, any questions?
Okay. Retirees. So left side again, you know, we've got 154 retirees. This is retirees with primary coverage. So these are, you're over 65 retirees, we're assuming that. There's 163 of them. You know, most of them are in, in the bronze plan, you can see what they're paying. So we made a slight adjustment on the right side to what they're paying. And it's not a big, huge increase, there's only two in the gold, so not a big deal there. We kind of put most of them in the bronze, but slight adjustment there. Oh, and by the way, you see the grandchild? So we, city has been covering any grandchild, whether you have legal support or not. So come once, come all.
I've never seen that.
Yeah, yeah. So I want to be somebody's grandchild.
Yeah.
I'm joking, but, so we're going to stop that going forward. That, they're going to have to have legal guardianship to cover their grandchild.
And that's what I presume, so well, they must have legal guardianship, but if they don't, there's no way you can cover.
No.
No.
Luckily, there's.
That goes back to consistency.
What's that? You can cover your grandchild, period, today.
Right now, with what we have?
Yeah.
Yeah, but that goes back to the, or non-consistency that we're seeing.
Right.
Wow, okay.
So we only have one or two, and we will grandfather those to.
Okay.
And it's, you know, I guess the bigger point here, Mayor, is, is that with, with all these undocumented people that we know are coming across our border, they could really burn us pretty bad if we weren't careful. In my opinion, would, would you agree?
Yeah.
Because we're real.
Well, I think it's, today's world, costs are so high with medical and pharmacy. You're really now trying to mitigate risk. And so if somebody across the street has a business and, you know, you're being selected against, they're, you know, employees are coming over here on your, I mean, you got to think like that unfortunately today because costs are so high.
Yeah.
So again, here, these are retirees without primary coverage, we've got 49. And we're recommending a slight change on, on those contributions also. Not as many folks in this, obviously, because the costs are, you know, pretty high. I'm going to move forward then to dental. Dental, we're recommending, this is more so just, you know, we have a two-tier contribution schedule for dental versus three-tier. So we're recommending go to a four-tier. These are really small adjustments. So I, I, you know, I don't think that, you know, anybody would be upset about these small adjustments. I'm going to move forward to vision. But vision is voluntary, we're, we're recommending the city contribute a small amount in the bottom-right corner, which amounts to $18,000 a year, just kind of like trying to help employees out. And this is for active employees. Not retirees. Meaning like not contribute, contribute only to the active. So not a big number, but it gives them a little bit better overall benefits package. Okay, this is our, our total planned cost budget, this is what Gallagher put together. I know Yvette's going to talk in a minute about her overall budget. But our actuaries put, you know, projections together based on the differences in network. We believe we're actually going to save more than what this is showing because we think there's a lot more, you know, old contracts in there that we're going to get better improvement upon. But you can see here at the top line, and we're recommending the far, you know, column, excuse me, top line's 9.7, administrative fees, we've got to run off the old plan for 25, so there's a cost for that. Dental's projected about 787,000, basic life, 186,000. And then the EAP mental health program we discussed is 108. And then COBRA FSA around 11,000 a year, and then 18,000 for vision. So, and then you'll see there, we're estimating changing the contribution schedule on the employee contributions. Questions?
Yeah, let, let me ask a question, let me go back. So when we're going back to vision, when we're talking about all these benefits, these are our active employees.
Yes, sir.
And then we have retirees, with the chamber also is in the benefit, you know, the employees. Does that include active chamber employees and retired employees of the chamber?
I wouldn't know about that.
That may be able to answer.
So the chamber, so the way the city has structured what the chamber participates, it's only in the employer-provided benefits, so vision was not.
Part of that.
We're proposing that we begin to pay some, some amount.
Are they receiving the benefit now? Are they receiving the benefit in the vision, are you asking for their contribution? No, they're not.
What, what the chamber's receiving is what we contribute to. And since we don't currently contribute to the vision, no, but that would become available to them.
Okay.
When we started contributing to it, because it's employer-contributed, is what's available to them. What I don't know about is the retiree piece.
Yeah.
But they are covered and they will be covered under, just like they are today. They'll be covered the same way.
So, that's historically, I mean, the chamber pays all the benefits, but it's only been for medical, dental, and that's it. And so, we will be proposing, so, um, we have lots of ordinances and resolutions that covers this plan.
Thirty-plus ordinances.
And so, what we're also going to be proposing is, and I talk with legal, I just see the best avenue, because there's no way I could get through all of those ordinances and resolutions. I mean, it's a lot, to determine if they're still valid, if they're still current, if we changed it, and I don't know if I have them all. And so, what I'd like to pitch or propose is that we just restate the plan document with all of, everything that we're deciding upon. Um, and if that means including the chamber to participate in the other benefits, then we can make that a part of that.
How would we clean the resolutions and the ordinances if there's over thirty? Over, how many number of years?
Well, we're going, well, we're actually going back, I would say, probably ninety-five, probably, almost thirty years. And so, the best way to do this is, we will state it as far as, uh, what we're doing now, the benefits, and we will essentially, basically wipe the others off, bring anything here too that has been passed beforehand, no longer, no, null and void.
What about legis- legislatively, that created this, uh, being able to be able to do this? 'Cause there was at one point legislation through Buddy West to be able to create this type of mechanism that's unique.
Right.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm not preaching to the language, but I, you know, but I, I would, I, yeah, I would definitely look into that.
Yeah, we're gonna-
We don't wanna get into a point where we're violating, everybody's gonna get their insurance, but we don't wanna get into, uh, was it, uh, you got one of your sayings about that, lick that cat-
Lick the cat over again. We don't wanna do that.
Yeah, and so, but yeah, try to be as thorough as quick as possible.
Yeah, we, we are. And, and what we're gonna do, though, is, we want to also, like I say, all, lack of a better word, it's a mess. I mean, I think Yvette would agree that it's a mess, uh, because there are resolutions, there's ordinances that have implemented this plan, that plan, over the last twenty-nine years. And so, what we've gotta do is, we've got to literally just wipe them all off and make sure that what we do here going forward is clear to everybody.
Wow.
'Cause it's a mess.
Could be able to write a manual out of this.
Yeah.
Well, you gotta get a-
As I was talking to that earlier, and it's somewhat like, like thought it, but as I was talking to her earlier, instead of looking at all these individual things and doing calisthenics to try to keep up with them, next year, she'll be doing what everybody administering insurance does at every organization. We've got a plan, how do we make it better, get at a lower cost, add, add benefits, that's it. You're not out there trying to say, okay, what did we do here?
Yeah.
You're, you're going into what a normal HR risk management department does now and says, we have, look, crosses, is this still the best plan? Is it makes sense to go to a different carrier at this point? And what are the benefits? It's just, it's sane.
Yeah, because right now, Mayor Council, we're literally looking at it saying, what in the world did we do here?
Yeah.
And Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's where we're at.
It's correct.
I mean, so, we're trying to untangle all of this, and legally, the best way to untangle is say, everything beforehand is no longer in effect, but from this day going forward is in effect.
Whether, whether we address the resolution or ordinance or don't.
Right.
Because they, if they can't find it, they can't correct it. So, you gotta get, get restated in such a way that it's a catch-all. If we miss one-
You're just gonna cast, you're just gonna, you're gonna cast a white net.
Yes.
Just with that language.
Just to be safe.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, that's the plan.
And, and, and we only presume it goes back twenty-nine years. It could be further.
Well, no, well, there's, there's, there's one in there for sixty, sixty-eight, I think.
Pretty far back.
Yeah, sixty-eight or sixty-four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it will be some tough decisions before you watch me talk about retirement. So, it will be easier to say that the chamber can participate. So, there are a lot of, um, questions that will be coming back to make sure we get clarity with the bronze on the way.
Okay.
And we'll work with, um, legal.
And we'll, we'll work, we'll get it done.
Okay.
What's the timeframe or our goal for this to be, I mean, the baby steps to be implemented?
Good question. So, we're, 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 we need to make a decision quickly, so I think that our plan is to try to get a final decision from you all, um, the next council meeting on the twenty-fourth, I think.
That's when we're coming back.
Yep.
For the actual approval.
Because we, we need to start the implementation process no later than October first.
Yeah.
We have, um, annual enrollment scheduled for October fourteenth.
So, you need a consensus today to move forward.
And, and we will gladly kinda draft those outstanding items for you, um, for consideration and give that to, um, to district.
This is, it's a broader plan and it's more comprehensive, and I sure like the mobile geographic feature of it, if you're on vacation or if you're in business. But, in this question, I don't, I don't know if it's answerable, because there's the, the single person, there's a family, there's the bronze, there's the silver, but for those that are listening, could you say that this plan on a percentage to the employees would be going up this much or down a little bit? Do you have any idea for a general percentage in cost to employee?
We, we can get that for you. Um, uh, you know, if you, if you look at this page here, twenty-six, you know, the city for this, for the mix there, it's paying currently ninety-five percent of the cost.
Mm-huh.
So, I believe it's probably gonna stay somewhere in that range, because it's actually probably gonna go up, because you're taking three hundred and forty-four folks in the silver who are paying more, and they're probably gonna go to the bronze paying less.
And one of the, uh-
So, it's gonna be a better deal for them.
Excellent.
One of the most important points I would make is that quite a few services that employees are paying for now, out of pocket, will be covered at a hundred percent.
Excellent.
So-
Labs especially. A lot of employees complain about labs not being covered.
So?
So, the increase, um, is, is really going to be nominal, but we'll get you the, that amount.
So, can I ask you guys something?
I mean, sometimes people don't feel like it's nominal, if you increase a dollar, but it will be overall a pretty low percentage.
Yes, sir.
So, for the first year, this, just, just hear me out, so for the first year, everybody stays in the bronze, everybody. Everybody gets the bronze. This will give you some, some, some negotiating skills. You can give them the eye, you could give them the dental in, as covered in there. So, there's, there's perks to this for them to all, everybody to stay in the bronze and do it that way, um, until you can get a handle on this. And then it, that gives you what? Seven hundred, seven hundred, uh, eight hundred people all on the bronze. That's could be a real huge discount to us for right now. That gets everybody covered and everybody going in the right direction. Then they can add their other contributions to it.
I will say that the other thing is, we're having a hard time understanding our full spend with the, the, the system. This is an old system. So, going to a new provider and we'll have so, our reporting's gonna be so much robust, we'll be able to know exactly how a plan's running, how this is, where are the expenses, who's got this? So, it's, it's gonna be a lot of good data that we can manage or change, you know, going forward, that we can't really figure out today.
You can make those adjustments mid-year, uh, if you need to.
You, you could. We'd probably prefer not to more, you know, but you're right, we can, you know, but I will tell you, you know, especially my team, we'll be watching this, we're gonna be providing the reporting monthly, but we're also gonna be watching stop loss, large claimants, diabetes, really getting this managed and figure out, okay, we need to move here, or maybe we need to, maybe we need to push more folks to the clinic, you know? That's the other thing, we'll have reporting out of the clinic too.
So, Chris, I appreciate your comments. Um, one of the things that we tried to do was, um, not come with such a culture shock, right? Um, that folks have had three choices in the, in the past, and so, we, we didn't want to introduce something that would be too foreign, um, in the first year. So, as Kevin mentioned, we're going to continue as we get the data, we're going to continue, make tweaks, um, make some decisions on where we think we should go to sustain the plan for the future. Um, does that help a little bit?
Yeah, it's just, you know, something to help make your life a little bit easier.
Yes, for sure.
If she's in insurance, there's no way you're gonna make it easy.
In that first year. And then that way, you can make adjustments to it, if you wanna add the silver back to it, or if you wanna add the gold.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
You may not even wanna add the gold, you may just wanna add the silver to it.
Okay.
For next year.
Okay.
I'm not sure if that's what we're doing. There's, there's people, everybody gets the, everybody gets-
He's just saying a future.
In the future, well.
Yeah, we're just-
And we appreciate that, thank you very much.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
So, um, I just, one last-
I wanna make sure people knew that if they wanna buy the gold, they can buy the gold, and if they don't choose, they go on the bronze.
Yeah. One last point, and we're gonna, um, stop. I know we held you hostage for a little bit. Um, so, um, inside that booklet, I stuck a, a little sheet there for you. And what this is, is that, because when I talked with Mr. Beckmeyer about this, as I began the process, I said, I think we can do it within the framework of our budget. And so, we made the decision for twenty-four, twenty-five, to keep the budget that we had for twenty, um, twenty-three, twenty-four. So, what you see is what was appropriated in twenty-three, twenty-four, and assuming that we kept that same budget, um, but we will have runout cost. Um, so, from October through December, we still hire new employees, we still pay claims, we still have things that happen. So, I've listed to you, listed for you what we think that cost will be for the rest of the year. Then going into twenty-twenty-five, um, because by law, we still, if we had to, had to process a claim under the old plan, we need to make sure that we have the platform available to do that. And then in addition to that, that's where all the data is, and so, that project is coming later as we figure out the data. So, the total cost that we're thinking is going to cost us, and we're not necessarily asking for the money at this point, but we think that we only came over about one point seven.
So, so I was actually pleased with the one point seven. I know that's surprising for me to say. We budgeted ten million. We came in at eleven point seven, projected. What I've asked Mrs., uh, Bonda to look at was not making an adjustment now, but as we get closer to using this up, because, um, I've got the feeling after talking with Kevin and Yvette on this quite a bit, we're gonna have savings that we haven't realized at this point, and I'm not sure that we will go over that ten, that ten million, I almost said billion, but that ten million, I'm, I'm just not convinced that we will. But there's also the chance that it's two and not one point seven, and I'd rather not come back with multiple, multiple asks to make that adjustment. And, uh, let's see what's gonna happen, so.
And that cost is elevated because we are running, uh, two systems to get us through.
You made it as simple as possible for us to be able to get past the learning curve. Good job. Counsel, do we, uh, have any further questions?
And they are also, we're gonna be, um, outsourcing a little bit of this to an ERISA attorney, so, uh, that will be able to help us.
Okay. Um, if you have any questions, do we have a consensus to move forward for two weeks?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
We're gonna move to item five, discuss giving authority to the city manager to write a letter to Hector County, agreeing for annexation of twenty-four point five acre tract located in Southwest Quarter Six and Thirty-Nine, Block Forty-One, Township One, Texas Pacific Railroad Company. Mr. Beckmeyer?
This is the, the process that we're doing now to annex whenever the citizen wants it. I believe this is some of Mr. Bell's, uh, property, and we have been asked to do this. So, what we'll do is, like we, two weeks ago, we talked about, we'll write a lo, an LOI, we'll send it over to the judge, the county commissioners will take their action on it, it'll come back to us, and, yeah, it'll come back to us, and, and we've said, we wanna do this, we agree with it. So, that's all, that's all. Is it okay if I let, if I write this letter, I think is the question.
Counsel, do we have a consensus on item five?
Yes.
Okay, you have consensus to, uh, give the authority to the city manager to write that letter. We're gonna move on to item six, update council memorandum of understanding with Centurion, and get consensus to move forward. Mr. Beckmeyer?
Okay, a couple of weeks ago, I don't know, it was several months ago, uh, y'all gave me the, the, y'all said it was okay for me to move forward with this. We came up with some more questions that we had on the MOU. We've been working with Centurion to clean those up. One of the big ones was, in the original MOU, it said that we would pay them five hundred thousand dollars at the end of this, and, uh, that's all it said. Well, they've came back and agree, with an agreeable schedule that says, okay, here's some milestones that they have to hit, if the, and it's only for out-of-pocket costs. In talking with Ben Mingle, which is CEO of Centurion, he said, he doesn't see it costing five hundred thousand, he sees it costing a hundred thousand. And it's actual out-of-pocket costs that they can prove and show to us. And what it does, basically does, if the worst happens and this fell apart at some point, we wouldn't be out a full half a million dollars. It would only be for work performed, and it would be negotiable at that. The other question that we had, there was some language in there about, it says, Odessa's obligation. No, that's not it. That's actually one of the really good things there is. Always remember, this MOU is, is not binding, except for things like the work being done and having to pay for that. Uh, there was some questions around, uh, some language that said, final determination by Odessa of Attorney General review process, potential outcomes, and was that putting, so let me explain something, because there's been some misinformation on this, that we're selling bonds, or obtaining bonds. We're not at all. And, so, but, the question was, are we having to do the bond work for Centurion? And the answer's no, we don't. So, what Centurion's question, their question was, on our lease, would it need to go to the Attorney General? And it does not. So, and, uh, spent, spent a good amount of time with our bond counsel and our bond advisor, and they're like, no, it's a lease on your, your part. From our standpoint, except we wanna make sure that they're good and solid, from our standpoint, we don't care where they get the bonds, it's not our business. We have a lease with Centurion. And the bond counsel and bond advisor are both comfortable with that, that we don't need to go to the Attorney General. That was the last question that we had on this, and so, it's cleaned up, and all I'm asking for is consensus to, because I'm also somewhat obsessive compulsive, I'm gonna go through it one more time before I sign it, but I wanted to update you all on that before we, before we executed this. That's it.
Counsel, any discussion?
So, with that being said, when can the transfer of the, of the title to the property be conveyed?
As soon as Mr. Bell wants to do it, but we can probably sign this tomorrow. That's what we have been waiting for, for the transfer of the property to be conveyed. Once that's transferred, then we will work with the foundation to go ahead and establish everything they need, because they'll feel more comfortable about moving forward. At that point, uh, I've already sent an outline of a lease to the foundation. We haven't moved forward on it because we're trying to get through this, but it will guarantee some things like hot funds and things like that to the foundation, in addition to, excuse me, in addition to the, the private contributions, like what you've been working on, Mr. Thompson, and in addition to any rental agreements, anything like that that will come through from people- And in addition to any rental agreements, anything like that that will come through from people that use the facility. This is a huge step.
Yeah.
And, uh, we've already made some pretty hu- huge steps out there. I understand we have equipment sitting out there ready to move dirt.
Except there's a mud drive.
Fence, well, that's a high-class problem out here, right? Uh, fences, fences getting moved around, things like that, which are great.
Encore is a big problem right now.
Encore is a big, they, they've slowed us down by, we need, we need a highline moved. And they're gonna do it, it's just when. I spoke with Encore today, and now they've escalated it and have committed to working every week to try to get it moved.
A lot of moving parts just to get gone.
It's a lot of moving parts.
Well, that's slow, that's slowing down the port on the infrastructure is.
It is. It is, and, and that's one thing, having that infrastructure in place, while it's not required to start the work on the actual facility, it makes it a lot easier.
Yes.
Big project.
It is.
Counsel, any, uh, further discussion, comments?
I got a, I got a comment. Um, so we all, so we all know that, you know, Dust American felt the need to write a article about this last, last week. Um, they caused, the quote-unquote local reporter from Arizona called me on Monday night asking for information on this, and I clearly told her that, um, our city manager was gonna have a phone call about this the next day on Tuesday. And, um, but, you know, in typical OA fashion, they, they took haste and wrote a story to try to paint the city in a negative light, saying that this project probably wasn't gonna happen. And, um, so, you know, I should've just waited just another week. I told her, you know, we're gonna be discussing this at the next work session. But, um, you know, and then, and it got, it got some traction, and some people started, you're trying to use it for their benefit, that this is, this wasn't gonna work, and we hope it does, but it probably isn't. Well, here we are, signing the MOU, and it's, it's happening. Um, I even told her, she can go and look at the, uh, work being, being started over there at the-
She could drive by?
But she, you know, she lives in Arizona, so she really couldn't make that drive. So, um, anyways, just all that being said, it's just, this is happening, it's, it's, it's working the way it should be. You know, we just, as a city, we had to make sure that all the i's were dotted, all the t's were crossed. This is a big project, so if we weren't gonna move hastily on this, we were gonna make sure that everything was done correctly, and it has been. So, it's, it's an exciting time for the City of Odessa.
As the council, we took on this project, and you guys headed the committee. How long you have been, how much time have you all spent on this?
At least two years.
Two years.
At least two years, yeah.
This is a big project.
And lots of hours. Many hours, we're afraid.
It's gonna take, it's gonna take time.
We're gonna be a paper hour, are we?
And one more time, the city's not issuing bonds or CO for this at all. This is, it's, it's never been under contemplation.
Yep.
So, Mr. Bell called me this afternoon, just so, and you'll be getting the call, I'm sure, because, uh, he wants to, the reason I was asking about the deed is because he wants, I think he's, he's talked to Max, I think? Max and John, yeah, and to get ready to go on the park.
Yeah.
And he want, he's not, he's not gonna start spending money on that until we transfer that deed.
The children's park.
The children's park, we'll talk, yeah. So, anyways, a lot of moving pieces, but-
There is a lot of moving pieces.
It's two, it's two facilities.
Yeah.
Same infrastructure.
But he's ready to go on.
The children's park is gonna be amazing, just another, so.
It is. It's pretty cool.
Exciting times.
No further discussion or comments. Uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved. So, moved.
Have a motion by Councilman Marta.
You're out of order, Mr. Marta.
Second by Councilman-
I'll second that motion.
All those that favor indicating for saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicate same side. Motion passed, unanimous, we are-